You want to see if Joe can do it?
Okay, do we need to start anew? Okay. Round two, Nataoma's Charter School Board of Directors, November 29, 2021 Board Meeting. I will call this to order at 5:39. Role call, Karen Harding-Davidson.
Here.
Nita.
Here.
Sean.
Yes.
Gina.
Here.
Maria.
Here.
Brezzi.
Here.
Jennifer.
Here.
Ashante.
Here.
Okay. There's a hearing of the public for items not on the agenda?
No comments received.
Okay. Hearing of the public for items on the agenda?
Also no comments received.
Excellent, okay. Any comments on tonight's agenda?
No.
All right. I may have a motion to approve tonight's agenda. So.
Approve.
Do you have a second?
Sorry.
All right, Ashante has a second.
And who made the motion, I'm sorry? Thank you.
All right, role call vote, Karen.
Yes.
Nita.
Yes.
Sean.
Yes.
Nina.
Yes.
Maria.
Yes.
Brezzi.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Ashante.
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, we have some consent items. November 8th Board Meeting minutes need to be approved, and then we have our joint power agreement between Charterite and participating schools. Questions, comments? Okay, they have a motion to approve? Consent items for tonight?
I saw.
Maria?
I'll take that.
Second from Karen, role call vote. Let me remember who you are, Sean?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Nita?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Ashante?
Yes.
And Brezzi?
I wasn't here, so I'll say.
Okay, yes, Jennifer. All right, and at this point, we will open the public hearing for our educator effectiveness funds grant. We're opening that public hearing at 5:40 PM. Any comments?
No members of the public present, nothing received.
Okay. On that note, we will close the public hearing at 5:41. Okay. Laura Barriel, an educator effectiveness grant and our teaching and learning update.
I guess I can do it from here.
All right. Just home, look at my presentation, ready? Which one am I doing first?
Educator.
Okay, great. So I'll start talking while we get the presentation.
Yes, please.
So as you all know, we have the opportunity to get educator effectiveness grant monies. That can, we'll be go to the first slide.
Oh dear.
So those are funds that have just been available starting in November, and so we put together a plan, next slide please. There you go. The goal of this grant is really to ensure that we have funding to support the development of all of our staff members. So that means instructional teachers that are in the classroom, school administrators, instructional aides, counselors, you know, anyone who is interacting with our students. And so that's really great, especially as we're working with our inclusive education program, being able to spend those funds on our instructional aids who are supporting kids in classes. I just, I really appreciate that this funding involves everyone at the school site, so it's really great. So we have, they have a list of like 10 different ways that you can utilize the funds. And so what I've done on this slide is I have kind of put them into different buckets that we are looking at for Nataoma's Charter School. So we're looking at coaching, how are we developing and supporting our educators of all kinds as they are moving through this new reality that we have with students? So, you know, whether it's, you know, promoting literacy with them, teaching them strategies, coaching them on their strategies, you know, giving them feedback in class, in the moment, that type of thing. And then one of the things that we're looking at, I won't go into too much detail, and then for professional networks. For re-engagement strategies, this is really about getting those kids back into education, getting them excited about it, because there's some disconnect that happened over the last 18 months.
No, yeah.
It might be just qualification by the school. Instructional practices is really making sure that, you know, we are standards aligned, we've got the strategies, and we're able to implement them equitably. And then curriculum training is just ensuring, you know, especially as we get new staff on board, you know, that we are training them in the curriculum that we have on campus, and making sure that they've gotten all of the training they needed.
Next slide, please.
So the grant is a five-year grant, and so we will have our plan developed for this year, and then each year there will be an update on where we are on it. And then in '25, '26, this September 30th, we'll have the final kind of report though, which you guys nearly kept up to date on that. All right, so looking at this, we're looking at about $390,000 that we're working with. And so what we're doing in the onset is kind of just breaking it up over the years, looking at we're going to be continuing this, the use of these funds over the next five years. So, you know, looking at coaching, looking at $10,000, and what we're looking at here is not paying for people, but paying for maybe some outside training to come in, or maybe paying for, you know, substitutes, so that teachers can go and observe other, you know, other teachers to see how a strategy is utilized. It could be that maybe they are getting, teachers or staff are getting a release data, sit down and look at data, and then look at how that impacts their instruction. Instructional practices, we're just looking here at like outside training, co-teaching, you know, how do you work together with the instructional aide and the teacher in the class, or how does the inclusive ed teacher and the classroom teacher work together? So those are outside trainings that we have planned, and this is actually great, because these are some things that we were already planning on really, and so we were gonna have to sort of straight up, where are we gonna find all the money for all the trainings that we wanted to do? Because I have a list of all the different things, and so this is great. So now we can do those. Curriculum training, like we're having, you know, staff that are going and getting like lab training, responsive classroom, that type of thing, and most of those are all outside trainings that they'll do. Re-engaging students with learning, so a lot of this is building that community, right? Building the different activities that we're doing, are we connecting families with students? So that, there's a lot that we can work on there, with like that social emotion meshing, MTSS, and everything. And it actually, it also, this includes things like, you know, books, sensitive, you know, to buy, sensitive to teachers to do, you know, like a book club type of thing on one of, you know, one or two of these books. So, for example, the EL task force, we all are reading through EL excellence every day, right? And so this would allow us more funds to go out and, you know, why different ones that are maybe specific to the different academies or different grade levels, and then, you know, get them all of those resources, so. It is awesome. We do have a direct cost on there, that's idea of reminding us that everything costs money to purchase and buy. So we just looked at splitting it up. Right now it's like perfectly even and beautiful, as we move throughout, you know, it's, I'm sure I'm not gonna spend, you know, I don't know, $10,103, right, on coaching this year, and so it will adjust as we go through, but that's kind of the general plan, looking at what different things cost. Next, where's that one? Okay. So looking at the, kind of more mid-grading of what are we doing within these buckets? So the coaching, Amy Taylor is helping to lead a staff leadership program, it's something she's taken on this year, and so looking at bringing them together. These are staff members that are interested in leadership positions, growing their knowledge, and so giving them an opportunity to grow and learn more about kind of moving forward in that. And that could be like teachers moving to administrators, it could be instructional aides moving to teachers, you know, and so it's growing the individuals within our organization. Learning lots are, like I was telling you, where teachers go and observe each other, and so they walk from classroom to classroom, looking for things, and then have discussions. Such a great way to learn, such a great way to talk. Collaboration time, and then UDL, which is universal design for learning. And so the best way to explain what that is, is making everything accessible. So it's kind of like the difference between stairs and a ramp to get somewhere, right? Stairs only, some people can walk up the stairs, but everybody can go up the ramp, right? And so UDL is finding one of those strategies that are help every child access the information and the learning, and so it's getting those strategies in place. Let's see, re-engagement, we're looking at PBIS, which is positive behavior intervention strategies. And so that's where instead of looking at punitive, you know, and things happening to students, like you did this, now you're getting punished, it's really looking at how do you ensure that they're learning, right? Because we want students to make mistakes here before they leave and go out into the world, right? And so mistakes are expected, so we want to make sure that they're learning, how do I, how do I do this better in the future? So training on that, restorative practices, and responsive classroom, those are really about understanding that this is all about development, and it's, you can't expect little tiny people to just be tiny adults, right? We're going to make mistakes. I don't know about you guys, but I'm still making mistakes in my life and still learning stuff, can't expect anything. And then looking at ethnic studies materials, because we will need to have a course by 2025 in place, and so looking at some of those materials as part of what's allowed in this section of it. Next slide, please.
This is a.
There you go. And you put it on my glasses. All right, instructional practices. So here, you know, we're really looking at how are we training our teachers to be able to support any child that walks into the classroom? Whether it's through inclusive ed, whether it's an English learner, whether it's, you know, students with maybe some social emotional needs, you know, or really advanced, and what are the bits? So we're looking at that, the differentiation, so meeting the needs of each kid, you know, co-teaching, really utilizing those. Some literacy training, especially as, you know, we, our population gets more diverse, we're getting older students that are needing more literacy development, and so especially in the secondary area, training those teachers in what are the, what do those skills look like, you know, what are the strategies? And then we're going to be creating a new teacher bootcamp. This is something we've been on the train of developing, last year Tammy Imgarten did a, made a like onboarding course that soon as our students, new staff, do some, they went all about Nataoma's Charter School and how our systems work and everything, and so now we're gonna make a bootcamp for new staff next year in late, like, early August, so that we could really like get in, get the information, and kind of start using all of our strategies and our supports to get ready for the school year, so. Super excited. And then curriculum training, looking at Ready Classroom, which is our academy use for their writing and their math. C-CAM, which is called Preparatory Mathematics, we want it in the middle school. I-Ready, we'll do some training for ethnic studies as we get further along in that, and then the project they're learning. So, all right, is there one more, or is that it?
Yeah.
Any questions about how we're headed with this, how this? I'd like all the initiatives that are gonna be taking place.
I would imagine the staff is excited about all of the different opportunities.
Yeah, I don't think that they're yet aware of this funding, because we've only been aware of it for the last 12 days. And this is like an additional opening of the legislature, having this year, including a plan. But Laura and her team, they were very intentional that we're not creating new things. These are the things that we already had built into our LPAC and our BLSK. What's actually kind of nice is it's giving us a dedicated mechanism for funding it over the next five years. Whereas previously, I mean, we would have found funds to make it happen certainly, but it's not like we had a dedicated funding source. So as Laura was bringing up, it's not enough money that it's gonna pay for people, but it isn't enough money that's spread out over five years. It allows us to make sure that we have the appropriate resources in place. And we purposely have the fitness plan, or Laura purposely written this plan, where the buckets are a little wide, so that we can flex and adjust. You know, right now, we know math is an area of work that we need to work on. We also know that supporting special education students through like universal design for learning is an area of work. But, you know, it could be that in two years, science is an area of work, or literacy is an area of work, and so it lets us flex a little bit based on what our students' needs are in that year, because I think if the last six months of having the kids back on campus has taught us anything, is it's gonna be dynamic and somewhat unpredictable over the next few years. And so this lets us flex and make sure that teachers have the professional development and support that they need.
And it really allows us to kind of bulk up what we were already planning, and it's just a little bit of a new way to be, it's like, ooh, now I can have, you know, a literacy group meeting for three days over summer instead of just one, or maybe two, you know, I, we can really watch it out and give them that, that time that they need to focus on.
Are the reports that we are doing, is that mandatory?
The annual report? Yes, yeah, it's a part of the grant. Yeah.
And then we submit that to?
Yeah.
It's a little strange.
Yeah.
It sounds very structured, and of course, the CD has said that they have no time to put anything together for us, so. Like, we don't have a plan template, we don't have a reporting template, we said we need to create a plan.
Okay.
By these dates, and, you know, roughly nine months from now, we're gonna do some sort of reporting. I think based on previous reports, it's probably gonna look like, how much did you spend this year? What did you spend it on, and what successes have you seen as a result of the implementation? And I think the, if you will, the auditing is really for the community audit, not necessarily for the Department of Education to audit. It's a little bit like our LPAC, right? Like, no one at CD ever looks at our LPAC and gives us any feedback on it, but the idea there is to engage the community through these board meetings for community members to provide it.
And they just came out with a format, I started playing around with it today, and it's pretty there for those. Yeah, pretty, I was like, I don't get to really write a lot in here, but, okay, I have my writing on another document. So, so based on your feedback, then I'll just finish up that document, which is what you'll get for our next meeting when we're upgrading it, so.
What is PBIS, that's Positive Behavior Intervention System?
Okay. Yeah.
You want to describe it?
Yeah, you can describe it more if you want. So for example, if a student were to, I don't know, bully somebody else or something, right? Instead of just being like, oh, you know, this is your punishment, blah, blah, you know, and then the kid's just like, well, forget about it, right? And they just kind of, they're kind of mad, and feeling hurt, and then feeling, you know, disengaged in the community. What you might do is you might say, hey, let's talk about this, what are your actions that are, you know, how are they impacting others? You know, sometimes you have the students like research something, you know, read about, learn about, sometimes they'll do a presentation, other times they'll, you know, have a collaborative, not collaborative conversation. Restorative, thank you, restorative conversation, or maybe I have my brain going through that. A restorative conversation where you sit down with the two kids, and you kind of talk it out, and you mend that, that relationship that's been torn. And so what that does is that allows the students to learn from the situation, and then kind of start, start again. And so if that's different than just saying, oh, I'm gonna suspend somebody, now you've been excluded from school, and then you're gonna come back and feel like you're not a part of it. So it repairs it, allows them to learn, so.
If I may?
Yeah.
So it supports, is the last S, so it's positive behavior intervention and support.
Okay.
And the key component of PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention and Support, is how are we being proactive on the front end? So what do we do to make sure that students understand expectations before we punish? And as Laura was saying, how do we restore that into the community? So sometimes it might, it might be a suspension. And how do you restore that student back into the community where it's not an exclusion, but a learning opportunity for people to grow? We'll actually be having another parent U, shameless plug, in February to teach, to share information with families on what PBIS and restorative schools really mean, because it is a different approach to what all of us grew up having. So we'll be doing that for quarter two, here in university.
I feel like we had already been doing some of this for a really long time, but it's nice to have an actual name and philosophy.
That's making it cohesive, and, you know, we're all across the board, absolutely. And because, well, I was just gonna say, because, you know, you can't expect these of kids unless you taught them how to do it, you know? And so it's giving that explicit, like, what do we expect here, you know? It's a, you know, maybe their last school, you could run, you know, in the classroom, and if we don't expect that, then we have to teach them, you know? This is how we do it here, and this is how we, you know, are a part of community.
I'm excited to get some feedback from the parents on how that's working for them.
Yeah.
Eddie?
Presentation number two. All right, oh, this is the best presentation, because I can talk about my team. Awesome. So next slide, please. Okay, so we are in the teaching and learning team. We, let's just say we have buckets, we actually stand buckets, they have filled buckets when we're working as a team to talk about how everything fits together. And so our different buckets are curriculum and instruction, professional growth, data and assessment, and technology services. So my team includes, absolutely, includes the IT department, the data management, so Molly, who was here last time with me, the front office staff, and then the library staff, and then our teachers on special assignment. So we're kind of multifaceted, but we all are working towards supporting teachers and students, so that students can succeed, so. All right, next slide, please. All right, so curriculum and instruction, so there's part of my con, we made sure this last year with a knife on a unicorn, so they were showing it off. So here we are focusing really on supporting the teachers as they're doing their instruction. So in looking at scope and sequence documents, which is where the teachers are planning out, like, how, how fast or slow am I going to be moving throughout the year? How am I ensuring that I'm creating all of the standards, kind of what's that part of the year? What is that plan? And especially, you know, as you have teams that are, that are changing or forming, like when you have new staff, right? You know, then they add up like to the sixth grade team or whatever, it's really working with them to have it all blend. You know, helping with intervention, you know, looking at how are things going in the classroom? And the TOSSAs, the teachers on special assignment are really huge in this piece, because they are going into the classrooms and they're working with the teachers, and they might be coming because the teacher says, oh, I'm really working on, you know, this one strategy, or, you know, dealing with this one topic, can you come in? And sometimes the TOSSAs will like model a lesson, or model a strategy, and other times they might come in and observe and say, okay, I saw like kids were really engaged with this when you're doing this, and then, you know. So it gives them a lot of support as they are going through this, and as they're doing the MTSS process. So for example, our TOSA, Tammy Imgarten, who's focusing on PACT and STAR this year, she's in all the MTSS meetings, so that as she hears the teachers talk about, you know, what are the things that we're working on, she can say, oh, here's a resource, oh, here, here's a training that you can go to, and really getting them the support symptoms that they need. And then the bottom thing is just an example of what we sent out today, is all of the staff is doing an MTSS course. And so we, and it's kind of an individual, it's an online course, so there's parts that you do individually, and so we said, hey, we need study groups, because some people learn, you know, not by doing it all by themselves, and so we've set up in December, we're each gonna have a day where we're doing a study group. So, you know, come with your questions, come ready to discuss, come just to work and, you know, get stuff done, but we wanted to make sure that we were supporting them in that process. So we do a lot of that, or pop-up PD, you know, where we see that it's needed. All right, next one. So, okay, here's my awesome, awesome ladies here. So as I said, in the top left, we have Tammy Imgarten, she's been our TOSA this is her third year, and so she is focusing with STAR and PACT. So she was a former STAR Academy teacher, so she's our expert in elementary. And so she has been integral in their MTSS processes, in getting assessments and vertical alignment going on, talking with the teachers, supporting them in their learning lots. So we've got STAR teachers that are going and observing each other, and so she's getting in there, and then she loves that information, she gets to tape it with her class for a little bit, and talk to the kiddos. Down below her, we have Marsha Mindle, who, we are lucky enough to have as a TOSA this year, she's been a leading edge teacher. So she's focusing on leading edge and PFAA, specifically middle school. And so she is working with MTSS, helping with assessments, and how to use our different tools to support students, and as well as kind of sharing the beauty of leading edge with our new teachers before she retires. So up in the top right, we have Courtney Sully, she is our math coach, and she is focusing on math at leading edge, PFAA, and VLA. She's focusing mostly on middle school, on getting the college preparatory mathematics, the C-CAM really ingrained. We started that curriculum in the COVID year, so it was a little bit wacky, it was a very hands-on curriculum. And so really making sure that the teachers are well versed in it, and how to use it, and how to get the most out of it, especially since it's, you know, one of our areas that we really need to focus on is math, and she comes with a ton of experience, she was a former VLA math teacher, so she is awesome working with them. And then we have Elsa Pretzel, she's our library librarian, but she also is just a wealth of knowledge as far as teaching and instruction, and so she is supporting our high school teachers in VLA and PFAA, and has been a part of their MTSS process, get some resources. I know she's heading up the, with Marsha, the, oh, Day of Reading that leading edge does, when they come back from winter break, we're getting all of that ready, it's just, it's awesome. As well as teaching some.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine. Short-term independent study this year is something that we did not anticipate, being such a big part of our lives. So these are amazing people that are taking care of it. In previous years, there was really a teacher for independent, short-term independent study, which is run through the attendance. But this year, we know we've had a lot of changes, requirements and things, from daily, you know, live lessons to, you know, our, well, I forgot to update our numbers, we're way higher than that. They're coming in.
I was wondering, like, has it leveled off, or is it still?
It leveled off a little bit right before Thanksgiving, then there were a whole bunch that were coming in today. So way over 325 different individual requests for independent study, and so that could be anywhere from three days to 10 days that we've had at STAR Academy. And so the top three, Jessica Benz, Tammy Imgarten, and then Kamu, who's actually a tax teacher, who's been helping us for a semester as well. And then we have.
Heidi Sermon.
Heidi, I was gonna call her Cindy, that's wrong, Heidi Sermon, that is our new COVID case manager that we hired for STAR Academy. So she helps to manage, you know, okay, this kid needs to stay home, this kid can go back, this kid needs a turn, so let's make sure, you know, all of those things. And then incorporating their independent study as well, to make sure that when the students are staying home, that they're still, you know, learning on, she gets the parents to sign up, gets it all set up. And then on the right, we have for leading edge and PFAA, we have Courtney Sully and Marsha Mindle that are working as independent study teachers. And then Michelle Hunnycut, who is up at our front desk at the background campus, is now our COVID case manager for over here. So we are really lucky that we had these individuals on staff and not in the classroom this year, because it is really taking up probably a quarter to half their time. You know, but we're doing a really great job with independent study, like they are so focused and determined to make sure that it's, that it's seamless for, for the students, because they don't want anybody to fall behind. because they don't want anybody to fall behind because you have to quarantine. You know, it's not a choice, you just, that's just where you are, you know, you have to do it. So I just wanted to, please. None of them planned on doing. Okay, next one, library services, oh my gosh, there's my library team. We've got Elsa Pretl, Caitlin Kelly, and Chris Strazo. So at the Blackrock Library, Caitlin Kelly is usually at our front desk here. They do so many checkouts. They are just talking with Elsa today, and they, their checkouts are at least 20 to 50% more than they were in 2019. And so what that tells me is that they're getting the kids in here, they're getting the kids checking out books and materials and things, which is great, because that's that re-engagement, that means they're reading, we know that's good for everybody, right? So, so that's great, they're adding new things. They're also doing, they have different theme displays that usually every time you come in here, as well as working with the advisory and the homeroom classes, doing equity groups, maker space, and game days. We have like, like our mother who's doing arm knitting. So they do all sorts of fun things. At STAR Academy, Chris Strazo is our librarian, and he runs the specials. So the kids rotate through Spanish art, my kids butt, and library. And so he's in there teaching those little kiddos every day. They're doing reading, they're doing learning, they're checking out. He's got helpers this year, he opened up the door school, I mean, he's just making it to the new level. So, they're really awesome. Next one, professional growth. Okay, so this is our passion at teaching and learning in that we are all about getting those teachers learning, and everybody, not just the teachers. And so a lot of the same type, types of things. I have on there our PLC plus, which is our, how the teachers are working together in collaboration, as well as our EL Excellence Everyday, we have an EL Task Force, so really getting them learning. And then the pictures are of our awesome VLA staff, cool. Problem-solving group project. Alright, next one, data and assessment. Ooh, you gotta love the data, right? What's a teaching and learning fee without data? And so just kind of looking at the things that we're focusing on this year, is looking at CASP. Because most of the students have not taken the CASP in a while, a couple of years. But we are really working on getting them familiar with the system, getting them to like kind of play around in the system with low stress environment, so that they're familiar and they know how to move around in it, so that when they come to taking the CASP test, it's just, oh, there we go, you know? Let's see, then LPAC, they're, we're having grade level meetings, looking at LPAC scores, how to support our students, what are our English learners. And then I Ready is our other diagnostic assessment. And so we're looking at using stations and having data chats with the kids, where they look at, okay, this is your area that you need to work to grow, how are we gonna do this? And then they will take our second diagnostic in this, December, January here, and then looking at it with the kids, look how much you grew, you know, like, okay, let's continue going. So that the kids are really a part of that, of that learning cycle. And so all of that just leads to, you know, the, the things that we have in place, whether it's Wind Time, Learning Lab, different intervention classes, bridge classes, all of those things to support the student. Next one, OIT, I have pictures of all different computers here with our lovely IT team. We've got Joe Cook, who's the IT manager, Nick Castarino, and Gabriel Kowalski, who are computer support specialists, and they rotate to all the different academies, or all, sorry, all the different sites, so that they're available and supporting them. They've done a ton this year, they checked out 1,500-plus products to students, which just makes me so happy that we can make that available to families. And then they're constantly updating all of like these computers in here, there's new ones in the K7 lab. So they're, you know, they're constantly working to make sure that our teachers and our students can access the learning and resources. So they're great, I think. Next one. That's it! That's my team! And they're awesome. Any questions about what we're doing or where we're heading? It's very similar to the other things, because, or the educator effectiveness. Just still heading in the same direction, sorry.
How are the Wind sessions going?
You know, they're going well, we're getting some good feedback. And it's, it's great, I was just talking with Dr. Ellis this mor- or this morning, maybe? It's kind of a long time. Sometime, you know, about how this is an opportunity to really meet the needs of, of students, you know, and, and putting together a session where you see a group of students that need something, you can put together some sessions where you can meet with them, and it's not pulling them out of their class, it's not making them, you know, stay home, but they can really get what they need. And so it's a, it's a good opportunity for kids to go and get extra support. So, yeah, it's pretty great. We have like writing, you know, intensive writing supports, or, you know, English supports, or math, that are being put into those, those Wind Times.
Anyone else? Okay, executive director comments, Dr. Luke.
Yeah, I just have a couple of quick things. We had our first Community Run the Feed the Hungry event on Thursday. I actually sort of lost track of how many people we had show up. I think officially we had 52 sign up for our team. But then some people brought friends, who are probably hitting closer to 75 by the time we're all said and done. So it, it was fun, it was a great opportunity, and I think we're gonna do it again next quarter. This Friday night is the Winter Vocal Concert, so if you don't already have that on your list, I'm in checking out, it's 7:00 here in Bend. And then next week, we have two Parent University nights on December 7th and December 8th. Both the topics are Things I Wish You Knew, right? Anything you want to ask?
Questions we wish you'd asked.
The Things We Wish You'd Asked, anything you want to add to that, to plug your, to parent you?
Shameless plug, shameless plug for parent U. It's, especially with the middle and the high school parents, a lot of times, you know, you kind of figure out the elementary school thing, but when your kids get older, it's things like, my child's personality has completely changed, it's normal, or is there something I should be worried about? Like, yeah, you might want to be worried if your kid is now in their room all the time, and you never see them. That's to be a concern. So, and we have some students who will also be there to talk about some of the pressures that they experience that parents may not think they're putting on them, but it's the hidden expectations that we tend to have as parents that is impacting their kiddos, and they're self-medicating to deal with the stress that their parents are putting on them. So, just those type of things that we wish you'd ask, and give you some insight. The elementary school, it's like, yes, your child is now throwing things and throwing tantrums, and they've never done that before. Hello, it was a pandemic, and they're struggling with how to navigate the world. The last part is, we have to remember, we're still dealing with the impact of the pandemic, masks, climate change, and racism. And those three pandemics, adults have a hard time navigating. And our students equally have their challenges with how to deal with the world, and sometimes they don't have the language. So, it'll be a good time, it's an hour, it'll be both virtual and in-person. The in-person will be here in the library, so that we can keep it intimate. And the in-person at STAR will also be in the library there.
So then our last time, our next board meeting is on December 13th.
Yeah, I have a question, Dr. Ellis. Is one of the topics going to be technology and challenges that children, that students are having?
So that, this one is our, this is Parent University number one. Parent University number two would be PBISS. Stay tuned for Parent University number three, where we'll be talking about technology. And as we go into the summer months, how tech can impact your kids. So you'll get that overview, but it will be, we only have an hour, you're gonna get a high, more of a, trying to use words that aren't by much written.
Like a scarrish.
High-level overview.
High-level, thank you, like, no scarrish, a high-level overview.
But certainly if a parent, you know, wants to talk about technology, they can always reach out to the principal, or me, and you can charge technology more than we do, we're happy to.
Ms. Heinz at STAR, she actually did a fabulous presentation of pre-pandemic on some of the challenges of technology, and things that we don't think about. Technology is, we still do want to limit screen time, although we had an entire 24 months of kids being on screen. Guess what, still not a good thing to be on screens that long. It definitely lasts a ton.
Yeah, I guess my question was, was more about what are some of the current issues that, that's taking place? Where the Google Meet was shut down at Leading Edge? That kind of thing is what I was more interested in hearing about. And I thought maybe this training was gonna cover that, but maybe I'm off on that.
So it'll talk some, but it's going to deal more with the top issues right now for middle school and high school, depression and anxiety, and technology has a role in that. Self-medication and substance use, dealing with grades and being able to move forward. So those are really the top three categories. And I can't remember the fourth one, because although I was ready for a shameless plug. I didn't have it written down.
Alright, doesn't matter.
Alright, board of director comments. Okay, future board agenda items. On that note, I think we can adjourn the meeting at 6:20. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.